Who we introduce for this DFA thing?
It'd be Derek.
Derek who? We're on? Okay. I'd like to welcome counsel and staff in the audience of our Committee of the Whole Meeting for September 21st. Confirmation of agenda, anything to add today, Madam Clerk? Okay, any disclosure of pecuniary interest generally thereof? Adoption of minutes from August 10th, Committee of the Whole Meeting, please.
Moved by Counselor Mellon, seconded by Deputy Mayor Gardner, that the minutes of the Committee of the Whole held on August 10th, 2022, of the Seventh Council of the Municipality of South Dundas be adopted as circulated.
Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing non-hallered in motion, those in favor, opposed of any, motion carries. So we have two delegations this morning. Our first one is the draft 2022 Water and Wastewater Rate Study that was done for us by DFA Infrastructure International, Inc. I'd like to welcome Derek Alley to our meeting. Welcome Derek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, great. Good morning to all. Hope everyone is doing well. This morning, I'd just like to take you through the water rate study, hit some of the key highlights, and I'm assuming that you do have a copy of the presentation available to you.
We do.
Okay, great, thank you. So...
And Derek, sorry, if you refer to any page on it, then please do so. Like, I see it's well-numbered, so it's little different numbers in our book, but we'll find it eventually.
Okay. All right, thank you. It's there. So we'll cover a little bit about the background of your water sewer rates, and then sort of the approach we took. And we'll touch a little bit on some of the challenges, talk about the, you know, how we've arrived at, you know, what your cost of service, what those would be for both water and sewer, and the proposed rates and next steps. So in terms of the background, if we go to page three on the slides, you'll see there that you did a study back in 2008 and implemented new rates in 2009. Since then, you've done some periodic, sort of annual, for the most part, updates of the water sewer rates. And this year, what's key is you've done your asset management plan. So that actually feeds into our rate study, which we did. We accounted for the recommendations made by the asset management plan, which were basically to achieve funding contribution annually of about 1.4 billion for water and about 1.1 for wastewater. So that's a key recommendation from the master plan that we incorporated into the rate study to determine what your cost of service would be and the impact of rates. So in terms of the study itself, what we typically would do, and what we did in this case, is really to sort of assemble all of the costs that would make up the cost of service for both water and wastewater. Part of doing that is looking at the future in terms of, you know, new customers who may be added and the additional consumption or generation of wastewater that may be added to the systems. The rates we are proposing would take effect in 2023, and at the end of it all, as part of your drinking water licensing, you're required by the province to submit the financial plan, as you probably already know. So once counsel approves the rate study, what we will do next is take that information and create the financial statements that would be required as part of the financial plan, and bring that back to you for resolution that would then go to the province as part of your licensing process. So the full cost of service, I'm on slide, I believe it's slide five now. You can see on the left side, it shows the makeup of the full cost of service, and it's basically your operating and maintenance costs, any reserve contributions, and any debt.
Derek, sorry, excuse me.
Sorry, Stephen, for interrupting. The slide deck that Derek's referring to, I've just sent it by email. There's also a hard copy coming for you. So if you want to open your emails, there is a slide deck, he's on page four, I believe, right now. I apologize for that.
Okay, just a second, Derek, we need to load that up.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, this is at least something.
At least you know when he's referring to page four.
Derek, has everybody got loaded?
Okay.
Okay, so we've gone through number three, correct, Derek?
That's correct, and I'm just on page four, going into page five.
Counsel Good was going to page five. Just give us a second to catch up, please. Paper copies. Okay. So maybe the best thing to do is go back to slide three and just hit us again with what's on here, and then high points, and then go on for there, please, Derek.
Okay, not a problem, Mr. Mayor. So on slide three, we just sort of recap your previous studies, and you would see there, the main thing is that in 2022, you completed your asset management plan, which is a key component of your costs going forward. So the recommendations from that plan were included in our assessment of the full cost of service for water and sewer. And basically, what the plan said is, as you may remember, they're recommending, it recommends approximately 1.4 billion annual contributions to reserve for your asset replacement for water and 1.1 billion for wastewater. So we have considered that in calculating your cost of service going forward for the water and wastewater. So in terms of the rate study itself, the key aspects of it would be assessing the full cost of service, and then developing rates and charges that would recover the full cost of service. And as part of the cost assessment, you see there where we also do an estimate of what your growth is going to be like, and any new customers who may be added to the systems, as well as the volumes associated with those new customers. And at the end of it all, once the rate study is approved, one of the requirements of the province for your licensing is to have a financial plan for the water system submitted. So we will prepare, the rate study itself will feed into and inform the financial statements that would be prepared, brought back to you separately for a resolution before moving to the province. So that's the last we'll let you see there under BOREC 45307, the financial plan. So on slide five, this gives you a sort of visual of basically what the rate study is, and on the left side, it'll show you the key components of what the full cost of service, how that's made up. And the main costs, components would be your O and M, your operating and maintenance costs, so that's your everyday cost of running the systems, things like chemicals, staffing, you know, repairs, all that stuff. Any reserve contributions that you make, so it may be reserve contributions to the capital reserves in particular, any debt you may have that has to be repaid, or any new debt that may be incurred. And you will see later on, we've made the assumption that you're not going to be incurring any new debt over the study period. And the fourth item listed there separately is asset management funding, and that's where the recommendations of the asset management plan completed this year have been brought in to the fold. So when you look at the full cost of service, you go to the right side, you'll see how you, you know, how that would be recovered, and it's basically through a combination of, you know, sort of your everyday revenues from admin, sort of fees and charges, and then the main revenue driver would be your rates and the revenues generated through the rates to make up, to recover the cost of service. One thing we don't include in the assessment is any grants, because those are usually uncertain unless they've been, you know, previously approved, whether it's a provincial or federal grant, or any other third-party funding. And if those do come along, then it's a benefit. It means that you would be utilizing less funds from your reserves in those cases. So the next slide shows your current rate structure, and it's typical of many jurisdictions, you know, across Ontario and elsewhere in Canada, where you've got a fixed charge as well as a consumption rate. And, you know, so you, this is pretty standard. Now, the one thing here that I would say a little bit unique, and has been utilized by many municipalities previously, but they've now switched over, is the relationship between the wastewater charge and the, sorry, the wastewater rate structure and the water rate structure. So as you can see there, the wastewater rate structure is also a combination of a fixed charge and a volumetric charge based on the water volumes. However, those charges are not set independently. They depend solely on what the water rates are. So as the water rates vary, so too will the revenues on the wastewater side, and they do not always match what's needed for the wastewater system in terms of the costs that have been incurred on the wastewater side. So municipalities have done this in the past, and then you have gone away from it, so the wastewater rates would stand alone, on their own, to recover their own costs. So moving along to the next slide, it shows sort of at a high level the number of customers you currently have, and the volumes we're talking about. You'd see there, total, you've got about 2,100 water customers and about 425 cubic meters a year of consumption, water consumption. And on the wastewater end, it's a bit lower, you've got a few fewer customers, and the related volumes of water is quite a bit less than the consumption.
Derek, I have a question here for Deputy Mayor, that's a question.
Thanks, Mayor. Just Derek, for this, when is this a snapshot of? Is this like today's snapshot, or is this three months ago's snapshot?
Uh...
Or...
It was three...
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Yeah, I see one of our staff persons letting us know, so Sean, go ahead, please.
The data was taken from Peter St. Lawrence, I believe, in either May or June of this year.
Oh.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Derek.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
So this slide seven gives you a bit of a snapshot of your customer base and the volumes we're talking about on both water and sewer at the moment. So in terms of the approach, the study approach, there's some key elements here that are captured in this slide that I'd just like to bring to your attention. The first one there is the study period. We've utilized a 20-year period, and that's to sort of try and capture any, particularly the capital needs over that period. Most of the infrastructure are long-term, you know, things like pipes and buildings and so that have, you know, lengthy life expectancy. So we usually do a 20 or 25, you know, somewhere in that range, to sort of capture all of those assets. The financial plan, the requirement under the regulations, is to do a minimum six-year period. So once we do those, we would be preparing financial statements for the period 2022 to 2027. The capital needs, they are based on, you know, our assessment of your asset registry. And what we did is sort of a desktop analysis of your asset needs, based on the life expectancy of the assets and the age of the asset. So, you know, for example, if, you know, a pump has a life expectancy of 10 years, and it was put in in 2015, we know in 2025 it'll need replacement. So that's sort of the approach we took to develop your capital needs over the 20-year period. On the financing side, the main source of financing would be from, you know, cash in your reserves. We've assumed, as I indicated, that there would be no new debt. Some municipalities, they utilize that supplement reserves. But you do have existing debt, previous debt, that is currently being repaid, and I think you would see for both in water and sewer, you have debt in each case that's ongoing, currently being repaid. Now, the asset management replacement funding is new. That's something that you haven't been, you know, formally doing, you know, through your reserve contributions. In the past, you have been, you know, by virtue of making those contributions, putting money away to be used for asset replacement or any other capital needs. But with the asset management plan this year, it's now recommending the 1.4 million for water, 1.1. What we've done here is, you know, for the purposes of the rate study, is phase those contributions in, because we recognize that to jump directly to those numbers immediately is unaffordable. So we phased those in. The reserve target balance...
Derek, Derek, can I ask some questions before we go on further, because it's fresh in my mind, please?
Yes, go right ahead.
On the asset management funding, what is, in your professional opinion, we do with our large capital assets, namely the water filtration plant and our two wastewater treatment Are you going to be recommending that we have enough funds reserved when their lifetime is expired to basically build new plants at that time, or are you recommending something different?
We, what I'll say, Mr. Mayor, is that what we have done in this case is we've assumed that there won't be any debt. So by virtue of that, we are saying that you would set aside the funds you need into a reserve and utilize those funds when they're needed for, whether it's plant work or some other major asset replacement. Now, I'll show you a slide later where you'll see where some of those costs come to and the timing of it. It doesn't preclude counsel from considering debt as an option to finance those specific projects when they do come around. And, you know, it doesn't preclude that at all. What it would mean is that you would probably have more funds available in your reserve to utilize for other projects at the time, if you do consider debt as an option for financing. One of the other considerations there would be to look at your debt capacity at the time to make sure that you're comfortable with the level of debt that the municipality would be carrying. So while it's not recommended that you, in this study, that we've not used debt as a mechanism for financing, it doesn't preclude you from doing that once the time comes around, say 10 years from now or 50 years in the future. But we've planned for no debt as far as the contributions to the reserve.
Okay.
Is that, does that answer your question?
Well, I understand your concept, and I'm just keying on the major assets that, you know, in part were paid significantly by other jurisdictions, i.e. the feds and the province. The challenge I see, and it won't be in probably my lifetime, because they're 50-year-old assets if you take it from building to nothing. The challenge I would see if you ask the current water users who have already, are now paying for the current facilities via debt, and that's mainly the water filtration system, because it was the one that there was not enough funds to finish up, and that's what we're paying the capital levy on. The other two structures were funded, Morseburg 90% and Airqual 100%, so there was no debt incurred on them, and that's great. But, you know, I'll use the round number of 2010, and 2060, let's say they're 50-year-old buildings, they'll probably be need of renewal or replacement. How do we ask the current users to keep on accumulating funds to 2060, to say that we have $50 million sitting in a bank account, ready to replace all those assets, where the users of those two facilities, three facilities, the new ones, will be getting free facilities and don't have to worry about paying for them? My thinking is that, yeah, when the capital levy's done, we would take those funds and keep them accumulating, mainly in a capital reserve fund, and I'm jumping ahead here, I know that. But I think the government's forcing us to make sure we have enough money there, so we don't go begging for more money, and that's fair enough. I understand the concept. But if you debt service those buildings, then at least those who are using those buildings for the next 50 years are the ones paying for it. Is my theory right or wrong? It's more a business attitude where you can't, you can't have every penny in your pocket to go buy, like, from a farm point of view, more land, or the million-dollar combine, because that's what they cost nowadays. Because you're not going to, you're going to have years that you can kind of pay it off as you use that asset up. Is that thinking, your thinking, or a little different?
No, that is correct. The, what you're talking about, the sort of intergenerational equity, where you'd have a future generation paying their way for an asset that they would be using. But for the purposes of planning, what you would have with this is, you know, we're planning for you to have the cash available. But if you, as I indicated, if you do decide to, you know, that you want to consider debt for, and it's a policy decision, then the money that you would have otherwise used to pay for, you know, treatment plans or any other major asset replacement could be utilized for some other purpose within, you know, the water and of the sewer system. So it doesn't, you know, if we assume that you would be carrying debt, then that decision would be made today, that you'd be relying on debt for a certain percentage of your financing going forward. So all we're saying here today is, we haven't relied on debt, but it doesn't preclude you from utilizing debt going forward. It means that, you know, you can, at that time, you can look at your reserve funds available, and there's always, you know, there's no definitive year or line where you move from current users into future users. It's sort of a continuum as you go along. So at that time, you can, you can look at what the current situation is, then what funds you have available, what costs might be, remember these costs that we've indicated here, based on, you know, the best available information that you've got today, which is, you know, life expectancy and age. But certainly going forward, you may have more information than things like, you know, maintenance experience with operations. So the operators may say, well, we're having problems with this treatment process or that treatment process, and things of the like, that may determine the timing of the replacement of some of those assets, and the cost at the time may be different from what we've projected here. So you do have, this is giving you the option of, you know, having the cash, or planning through the cash, but certainly you will have the option as well of incurring debt at that time.
Okay, I understand the concept, I just don't want to, you know, for the vast majority of our capital expenditures, I do believe we need to reserve those. My biggest challenge going forward, and as I said, it won't be this council's problem, it's looking way back, but we set them up for either success or failure, starting here or the next council, is how much do we put away for the big assets? And I do have to keep in mind that those big assets, half their costs are equipment that will wear out and will have to be replaced. So putting money aside, as you suggest, is probably a good start, and then someday down the road, counsel and staff will have to figure out, do they have enough that is fair, that balances out having enough money to replace the big assets and debt servicing some of it to make it fair over a lifetime, of those who are using the asset? Because as I said, I don't think it's fair that those who are not going to use the asset or throwing money into a bank account to pay for something that a future generation will have to use. It's like buying a house or big assets like that. But you still have to have enough money in your bank account to replace a roof, replace some major equipment that operates on all those plants, so I understand that. So got a question with Counsel Mellon here at the same time, so I'll turn it to him for a second.
Thank you, Mayor Bybels. Maybe you can clarify for me, start along the same lines as Mayor Bybels questioning, but on the asset management, when asset management first come in, I was led to believe, maybe I misunderstood, but any future funding would be tied directly to your asset management plan, and how much money you have put into replacement costs and stuff like, you know, for large ticket items? Is there any, and that can change, I realize, from government to government, but is there any benchmark where they say, well, okay, you need to have at least 50% of your asset management, you know, the replacement cost in place when that asset wears out, or like 75% or 25%? Because I don't think it's realistic, I guess if you will, that we can have 100% of cost replacement on those three items. replacement on, on those three items. But is there any benchmark that they have come up with that to say you have to have, say, like 50% to apply for funding, or, you know, you'll get more funding if you have 75% of the, of the costs? Is there any, anything in that legislation or in that, you know, government policy for, you know, for us to have asset management? It's not a bad idea to have asset management, I just wondered if, you know, where our bottom line should be, you know, where we should be striving for, I guess, you know, what our target should be. If we need to have 100%, it's gonna be quite a hit if we, you know, if we can be realistic and try and have 50 or 70% of it, it's, it's an easier number to get to. I just don't know if staff or if you're, if there's any clarification on that.
Through, through you, Mr. Mayor, there are some guidelines. The, the regulation, the asset management regulation requires the preparation of a financing strategy, but it does not prescribe any, you know, level of funding that must be available in a reserve or anything like that. However, on the industry side, sort of industry best practices that if you can afford it somewhere between 1% to 2% of your asset value should be set aside annually for, for invested in asset, you know, whether it's asset renewal or asset replacement. And if you look at the numbers that your asset management plan recommending, they're sort of within that ballpark of 1% to 2% of your asset value. So I think, you know, that would be your guide as far as the, the annual funding is concerned, as far as how much you accumulate at the time of the need, when it's, when the expenditure is required, there's, there's really no guideline on what that should be in, and that really boils down to a decision of council at the time. And, and, you know, you're overall looking at all other factors as well, things like you was just discussed, you know, the sort of intergenerational equity sort of aspect, as well as the cost of the asset at the time and your debt capacity. You may have other projects unrelated to water and sewer that may be pressing where you may need, you know, let's, I'll just throw as a hypothetical example, an arena, something that's quite expensive, that you may wanna utilize debt for that purpose, and that may, you know, be a priority in terms of debt financing of water and sewer, depending on your debt capacity at the time. So those kinds of discussions would, or considerations would need to, you know, come into play before you make that decision. But certainly the reserves will be there, may not, as you indicated, may not fund 100% of your, you know, if it's a pump, yes, but if it's a plant, perhaps, no, it may not. So you may have to look at, you know, at least a portion of the debt finance. But again, these are projections, and, you know, once you, you get the real cost at the time, then you, then those decisions can, can be made. But this is sort of setting you up so that you, you'd have cash available for the most part to assist with the asset replacement. Now, keep in mind too that because it's being phased in, these contributions, theoretically, there's a shortfall in funding during that phase of period so that you're not fully funded until we get to the 1.4 annual or the 1.1 for wastewater. And, and that would be in about 10 years or so, give or take for both systems. So, so during that period, we're not really fully funded as per the recommendation of the asset management plan. But certainly there's enough money, you, you're adding to what you've been doing and increasing that EGA going forward so that in 10 years or so, you should be, you know, hitting that, you know, 1% to 2% of asset value annual funding as recommended in the, in the asset management plan. So I know there's a lot there, but at the end of the day, it's, it's, you know, at the time, I think, you know, you, you can look at all the information and make that decision on what you think is best for that particular expenditure. And if that is, is, you know, is in the cards, then, then, you know, you certainly do that. And a lot of municipalities have gone down that, you know, they, they use that as a sort of a, a key part of their overall capital financing.
Okay, if there's nothing further, let's, let's go on, I'm sorry about.
Nope, not a problem, Mr. Mayor. So we went down at the reserve fund target balances. Now, there's no set values or target balance that should be there, you know, there's nothing really recommended, but what we've looked at, you know, at other utilities, particularly in the states, those that, you know, sort of operate, you know, on a, they rely on, on the revenues and cash available, they sort of operate with capital reserves ranging between 5% and 10% of their asset value. So we've sort of done the same here, is look at, you know, trying to get your reserves to a level that's between 5% and 10% of your asset value. One of the drivers here too is when you look at the asset management regulation, it talks about having enough funds available for emergency events, sort of disasters, if you will, climate change events. They, they don't really say what that should look like, you know, is it, you know, a percentage of your asset value, is it, you know, they, they just indicate that the financing strategy should account for that. So, so what that means is that, you know, when, when the money is set aside in the reserve, if you do have, you know, maybe a, a major main break or, or, you know, a sewer collapse or something like that, that there would be funds that you can go to, to be able to help fund, if not all, but at least some of the, you know, the bulk of that work that's needed at the time. So, so the 5% to 10% is sort of including consideration for that need as well. And then at the end of the bottom line there on that slide, you will see the purpose of, you know, the, how, you know, what we're assuming the reserves would be used for, and it says there, any new assets, so due to growth. Of course, any new development, there would be payment by the, the new growth to contribute to those new assets that are needed, if it's a new pipe or whatever. But sometimes there's a benefit of that new asset to the existing customers, and in those cases, the rates would pay for that portion of it. So, so there's some aspect of new asset installations being paid for from the reserves. Of course, we just talked about asset replacement and the unforeseen capital needs. Excuse me, moving to the next slide number nine, we've assumed inflationary increases, and this is on the operating cost. So these are things like consumables and so on, the 2%, you know, inflation is quite high, I think it was just below 10% or around 10% yesterday, looking at it, but we're looking over a 20-year period, so our sort of approach is that over that period, it'll probably be around the 2% range, which is what it has been for the last, you know, few decades, if you will, on average. So that's what we've gone with in terms of the capital cost, so that's the, the non-consumables, things like building and construction, so we've assumed 4%, which is sort of what has been, you know, average for the last five years or so in, in the construction business. In terms of customer growth, we've looked at the stats scan, latest in the 2021 information. We've also looked at a feedback from staff on any new developments coming in, and we've projected what the new customers would, you know, what that would look like and the consumption and volumes for wastewater. Now, we have to be careful that those are not overestimated because then it would overestimate your revenues from rates. So if they're slightly underestimated, then it means that, and you get more growth, then it means that your revenues overall would be higher. So it's a sort of conservative approach in terms of revenue estimation and people over the period. And the rate structure, we've assumed that it'll stay the same unchanged, the capital level rate for water would continue, so we kept that in play, and of course, the, the wastewater rates being at 100% of the water charges for Airqual and 75% for Moore'sburg, we've kept that. So based on our analysis, this slide number 10 shows the, over the 20-year period, what the capital needs would be based on age and life expectancy, and it's around 20 million, and these are inflated numbers. So it assumes that, you know, that 4% increase in, in, in the 2022 value of the asset as well. So you're looking over that period, about 20 million dollars to be spent on, on assets that would come to you for replacement. And you'll see here on the next slide 11, in 2033, you see you've got about 10 million right there and in water and sewer, and that's for, mostly for plant-related work from what we've seen on, in the asset registry. So along the way, you've got different levels of need, but that's the big one in about 10 years, that would be, that cost would need to be financed at that time. This is where, you know, you can look at a debt and say, okay, maybe we should consider debt to finance a part of that and not to use the reserve entirely. However, we've assumed that you'd be using the reserve for, for that purpose. Now, the next slide shows the asset needs as well, but this isn't today's dollars, it doesn't include inflation. And you will see there on the second column from the right, you see a 1985 for water and wastewater. Most, that's, that's the, the expenditure that's projected for the period beyond 2041. So in other words, what, what we've, based on our analysis, what we are saying is that most of your asset replacement is going to be beyond the 20-year period when you look at your entire water and sewer systems, like the whole thing. Some of that for us is indicated is going to be within, so that's the 6.76, and when those are inflated, you get to the 20 million that showed on the previous slide. So the very right column shows the 1.11, which is, you know, what the asset management plan has recommended as being the sort of annual funding that's needed. They likely took, you know, you know, maybe 100-year view of the assets and say, okay, you know, every year for 100 years, you put away that, you, you fund them to that level, then you should have enough money as you go along to even to fund the asset replacement or renewal that's needed. So I think what's important here is to, to know that most of your assets are coming due after, beyond 20 years. When we look out from now to 2041, it's gonna be after that most of the replacement needs. In the meantime, you'd be funding, putting money into the reserve, and we'll look at the reserve levels on the later slide as well. So the full cost of water, you know, given all of the input information, currently through 2 million gross, and you've got some sort of non, you know, administrative revenues, fees, et cetera, so it's about 1.8 million net, and that's the amount that, that needs to be recovered or is recovered from, from the rates. Now, if you look up, you'd see the reserve contributions are around 462,000, and your debt repayment is about half a million. When you look at the right side, that's the average annual cost if you look at the whole 20-year period. Your overall gross cost is about 2.8 on average, but you'll see the debt, the debt repayment has dropped off and the reserve contributions have gone up significantly, and they form a much bigger piece of that pie of your costs, your full costs over that 20-year period. So this slide shows, you know, it's a visual of the gross cost, so not, not the net, so this is slide 14. You'll see that the operating needs and the cost, and the bottom, the blue lines, they sort of go along nicely increasing, the debt, the red drops off after, I think in 2035 or '36 or so, but the reserve contributions, that's where the asset management recommendations have phased in over the period, so those are increasing. Similarly, for wastewater, you have there currently about 1.1 in net cost to be recovered from rates, and on average about 1.7, 1.8 million over the 20-year period, and the same thing, the reserve contributions would be a much bigger piece of your cost over that 20-year period than it is today. Very similar to water, you'll see the wastewater here, you've got debt continuing, and you've got the reserve contributions increasing over the period. So I mentioned some challenges at the beginning. The first one there is the meter reading cost. Now, this year, those were around 72,000, next year, it's estimated that somewhere around 210,000 or 12,000, somewhere in that range anyway. So the bottom line is it's a significant increase in meter reading costs, and, and I know from speaking with staff that, you know, there's some efforts being made right now to try and, you know, rein that element to ensure that, you know, the costs, wherever you can reduce costs, that those efforts, that will be done in time for next year if possible. So, so that's a, that's a challenge, it's a big increase going forward, and that's an annual operating cost, so it's not a one-time cost, it's, it's gonna be there, you know, every year going forward. The other challenges that the, as I mentioned, the wastewater revenue depends on the water rate, so it's not in sync with the needs, the financial needs of the wastewater system. So if the water rates go up, the wastewater revenues would go up, if the water rates stay flat, then wastewater revenues would stay flat, regardless of what's needed on the wastewater side. So we look at the reserve later, and you'll see the impact there. In terms of the building, based on discussions with staff, we understand that there's some little bit of a challenge sort of having the wastewater, the fields that are available on the bills to have the wastewater standard would be not, you know, those fields may not be there right now to be able to do that.
So Derek, Derek, since you're on that subject, and we're on, on slide 17 for those who aren't there. for those who aren't there. What we have done in the past is we have, staff have come to us with a budget of necessary needs for, for the air qual plant and the Morseburg plant. And as you can see, they're different because of the number of users, and we also have to keep in mind that not every water user is a wa, is a user of the wastewater treatment plants. There, there are some, we just have water and they have their own septic system to deal with it. And that, there's a big, you know, that shows that differential, but as, as a, as a habit, well, I don't know, as a, as a, I guess, an operational thinking, we look at the needs and we just make the percentages work for what we need. Because I, you know, as staff probably told you, how do we, we don't measure what comes in the plant from every user, so you use the assumption, and rightly or wrongly, that if it bring in a liter of water, there's at least a liter of water going back out the system. Not really, because there's waste and there's, you know, stuff doesn't, you know, if you drink it all, you don't all put it back in the system, but it was an easy way of doing it. So do you have any proposals to change it? Or is this a system that future councils can consider? At one time, Morseburg was a hundred percent too, but we started accumulating too many, too much funds in that system, and it was recognized that the users didn't need to put that much away every year, and maybe they knew now and after this, but that's why I wanted Morseburg seventy five with more users and Airqual's a hundred with less users. There's always a contention with that because the people in Airqual feel that that's not fair, but we only look at what we need, and we're trying to be fair with the system in the end, and that's just the way life is going forward. And I know that there are, there may be some election candidates out there that think we can make everything perfect, but that doesn't work. So I want your opinion on, on where we need to go forward suggestion wise, and at least we can listen to those, and then in the end, we'll do what we need to do.
Yeah, sure, Mr. Mayor. What has, you know, we've indicated the, we've assumed that you would continue with those surcharges for the hundred and seventy five percent. And they work. I mean, it, it's not that they don't work, they, they do work. The restriction is that they don't match, the revenues that are generated do not necessarily match the need, the cost need on the wastewater side. So what we would suggest, I mean, this is, if you look at this today, this study as sort of a first step in, first of all, getting, getting you the funding, the funding levels that's needed for both systems together as a whole, then you're on the road for towards, you know, financial sustainability. The next step you can look at maybe at a future update of your rates, maybe five years from now or so, is perhaps, or even sooner if you so wish, is looking at removing that connectivity or that coupling of the water, the wastewater rates from the, from the water rates so that they stand alone. And what that would mean is that if you need a million dollars for wastewater, then the rates would be, this water sewer, sorry, the wastewater rates would be based on that need of a million dollars. Currently, if you need a million dollars, the revenue that you get for wastewater is solely dependent on the water rates. And it's perhaps a fairer system of, a structure of charging for wastewater. So when you talk about the, you know, the seventy five and the hundred, then everybody would, would be paying for their waste, for the wastewater based on the need of the wastewater system, and not relying on the revenues that's generated or the rates on the water side. So if you, if you, if you don't have, you know, if you're a sewer customer, then you're paying for the sewer system based on its own needs. And if you're a water customer, you're paying for water based on its own needs. They're not sort of one depending on the other. So our recommendation is that going forward, like today, you know, we sort of raising the level of funding so that there's the money available, and then going forward, you can look at revising the rate structure. If you were to do the two at the same time, it may have some significant impacts on the rates, you know, as of next year. So it's probably better to, you know, get the level of funding up, and then you can look at some point later on of, you know, revising the rate structure where you separate the wastewater rate structure from the water rates.
Okay.
Which is, which is where many municipalities have gone, you know, over the last, you know, several years. They've, they've had this, it's not common, but they've moved away in many, in many cases.
Okay, Sean, you had something to say before I comment further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you look at the very top bullet point on, on slide number seventeen, it says the increase in meter reading costs from seventy two thousand to two hundred and twelve thousand. Probably in the next year or maybe two, we're going to have to consider whether or not we're going to, seventy two thousands a bargain. Obviously, we can't do it in-house for seventy two thousand. Can we do it in-house for two hundred and twelve thousand, the reading and billing? Maybe. The problem, the, the problem we have with the wa, with the wastewater billing structure right now is we're limited with what we can do on Rito St. Lawrence's bill because they've got, because it's combined with our utilities and, and electricity. But if we're to bring that in-house, maybe that's going to be the time that we can expand the structure to what, what Derek is alluding to with volumetric and, and flat rate, which, which would be, which would be a little more fair, I would say, because you're, as opposed to, as Derek has said, we're, what's happening now with our, with our surcharges is our revenue fluctuates with the water rates. However, if we, if we come up with a formula, maybe it's not seventy two cents for per cubic be, per cubic meter volumetric, maybe it's fifty cents. But we, we'd have to arrive at that number at the time, and right now, our, our hands are tied with, with how we can make that change, but that's probably something we're going to have to look at in the next year or maybe two.
Okay, so right now, with the, the surcharges of a hundred and seventy five, the flat rate of the water pays a big part of what we put into the wastewater system. Would that be correct?
Yeah, so every, every dollar of, of water flat rate, Airqual's paying a dollar, Morseburg's paying seventy five cents.
Okay. But if you base it all on volumetric?
Oh, I'm not saying that we'd base it all on volumetric.
Okay.
We could, we could do the same type of structure, but that will have to be a discussion at the time when, when we, when we actually view whether or not we're going to bring it in-house.
Well, I understand that, and I, even my thinking, even if you don't bring it in-house, we need to separate the electricity from, from water and wastewater charges in the billing system. Basically, electricity is on its own and water and wastewater, it's two bills. Because right now, it, it's challenging users, they just look at the bottom, and, and they either pay the bill, they don't pay the bill, and if they don't pay the bill, we all know what happens internally with that system because of the way it's set up. So I think, you know, even if Rito St. Lawrence continues on, I think, looking, going forward, I think a two-bill system is probably the best. I'll leave it up to you guys to figure that out, if that's the right thing or wrong thing. It's going to cost more, but in the end, it's more fair to, to both systems to how to do that, so. And, and when it comes to the seventy five and the hundred, Derek, you understand that those numbers aren't locked in. We can, you know, if, if staff feels, if you need, feel that we should be charging, let's say, a hundred and a quarter for Airqual or, or a hundred for Morseburg or, or even equal, and equal makes Eric, Morseburg put lots more in reserves, it, it, that's where our flexibility always was, because you can't measure it, and, and you can't, you can't go on the assumption that liter in, liter, liter into the system from the water side is a liter out of the system going in the wastewater side because they're not equal. We also have the challenge of systems that have infiltration issues, so in the end, the system costs what the system costs, and you have to surcharge to figure this thing out. It's more, we take the easy way out. I understand that the best way out is, you know, metering everything out, but in the end, you got, you got, there's a balance between simplicity and making it far too complicated for staff and the users because we already have enough complaints with those who use water, either washing cars or watering lawn, saying, well, it's not going down the system. Saying, well, it doesn't matter, we need X to figure it out, this was the easiest way of doing it. So as I said, you can make it either complicated or you make it simple, and we're, anyway, go on.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, again, the system you have now, that surcharge, it works. But if you, as you move forward and you look at Sean has indicated, you, the structure is going to be similar to a fixed cost on a volumetric rate, and volume in that case for wastewater would be the consumption volume of water, which is typical. You can't really meter wastewater, so you rely on the water volume to determine that. So, but that's a discussion for another day, what, once you, you get there. The last bullet on this slide shows, you know, we've sort of figured if, if you have to fully recover the annual cost each year, then starting next year, you'd need a double-digit increase, somewhere in the twelve, thirteen, fourteen percent increase of rates. So that's one of the challenges we had in terms of affordability, you know, it would certainly affect that. So we've looked at, and you will see going forward, we've looked at another option, which is, you know, to continue, to continue on with a more modest increase. And I'll, I'll flip to that slide right now. So this slide, next slide eighteen shows your current rates, you can see what they are as of today. So this isn't, you know, anything new, that's what customers are paying today for water and sewer. And then on slide nineteen, you will see what I was just referring to, which is having a more modest rate increase of four percent on average over the next twenty years. That would allow for, you know, there are a lot of moving parts because of that surcharge and all of that. If, if you go more than four percent on the water rates to recover sufficient dollars to offset any potential deficits that it needs, you'd be raising more money on the sewer side as well, and have, and having to put that away because it's not needed during that period as much as, you know, when, when you look at the need. So it's sort of a balancing, it's sort of compromised to have, it's sort of a sweet spot, if you will, the four percent sort of gives you a reasonable amount of cash for water as well as wastewater without swinging too far either way. This also allows for the phasing in of those asset management annual funding amounts that we discussed. And as indicated here, one of the key aspects of this would be to, there will be annual deficits, so you're most budgeting for that. And the idea is to utilize the cash in the capital reserves to offset any deficits when they happen. By the same token, if there's a surplus, you can put that back, you know, repay the, the capital reserves at the time. Now, what this means is that each year, you know, it would be a bit more for staff to, and it's still in terms of, you know, transferring, you know, making sure, tracking any transfers from the capital into the operating reserves. But based on our projections, we believe that, you know, as you go forward towards the end of the twenty year period, you'd be getting into more surplus situations. And keeping, keeping in mind that most of your asset needs, while you have this cash in the reserves, most of your asset needs are going to be beyond the twenty year period. So, so that cash, some of it can be utilized to offset, almost as a rate stabilization role, if you will, so that you don't have to put rates up too high for the, for the water, water system. And of course, when, when you do look at separating the wastewater rates, whenever that is, you can, that, this whole aspect can, you can rethink that about the rates, you know, what the rates need to be at, at that time. Getting into slide twenty, this is showing the proposed rates. And it's a four percent across the board, and of course, that four percent would translate over to, you know, it's done from water, so it'll translate over to the wastewater side with the, you know, respective surcharges. So on slide twenty one, you can see what those rates would, would look like. And on slide twenty two, it shows you sort of the combined reserve balances based on the approach I've described, which is, you know, putting in the money and phasing in the asset funding requirements, and at the same time utilizing any of your, you know, the cash and reserves, some of it to offset any potential deficits without, you know, increasing the rates too high. This is what the, we project the reserve balances to look like as a combined amount. So you'll see the red is water, the blue is, sorry, the blue is water, the red is wastewater. And in twenty, about ten years from now, it'll hit the lowest combined total of about half a million. But by the end of the period, you'd be somewhere around twenty one million in combined water and wastewater reserves, which would be roughly around ten, you know, or just below ten percent of your asset value at that time. So again, today will sort of, you know, put us on track to have sufficient dollars available, and then maybe the next round, you can look at, you know, how to optimize and, and make the rate structure a bit fairer. And then you can also look at later on, maybe utilizing, you know, in future rate reviews, utilizing debt if you so choose, and then that would have an impact on the rates, it would spread the cost out over a longer period of time, and therefore, the rates, the impact on the rates would be spread out instead of, you know, having the reserves fund, fund the, the capital in the years needed. So what this would mean is that there may have to be transfers between maybe the wastewater reserve to the, to the water reserve or vice versa, and then offsetting from the capital to the operating budgets if, you know, if and when there would be deficit. So that's what I was referring to, that there would be a bit more administration by staff required, you know, to track and to do those transactions internally. So it's a sort of internal borrowing, if you will. But what it does do is it, it avoids the pressures on the rates to go up during that period. So it's trying to keep rates at an affordable level, but doing a bit more management of the funds available in-house to, to, to offset any deficits and so on. So that's sort of it there in a nutshell. Now, the impacts on the customers, so we've, we've looked at what, you know, how, how would an Airqual customer or Morseburg customer be impacted by the four percent? And we've assumed that the average residential customer has a five And we've assumed that the average residential customer has a 5-inch meter and consumes about around 140 cubic meters a year. And at the bottom of this slide, so then, so it shows you, you know, between 2022 and 23, what the change in cost is going to be. So for Neraqaw, customer is about an additional $51 for both water and sewer, and $45 for Marsquaw for both water. And so, so on average, around a three and a half percent increase for both sets of customers, somewhere in that range, that would be the increase to the customers, sort of the average, average customer. And then the tips of next steps, you know, once we've received comments, you know, I'm sure it's a lot we've taken today. We would finalize the rate study and then use that information, what the information, the financial information we have, to generate the financial statements that are required for the OREC plan that needs to be submitted to the province. And then of course, we, you know, that'll be brought back to you for a resolution to receive it. And, and then that's a requirement of the regulation, that it must be, there must be a resolution of council of those financial statements before it goes to the province. And if there are any questions, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to try and answer them. If there are any more than what is been asked already.
Okay. I will go around the table and, and ask if there's any further questions and comments. Deputy Mayor?
Thanks, Mayor Bivels. You know, it's a thorough presentation, so thank you, Derek. I like presentations like this because it gives us a clear roadmap of what the expectations are and why, why the roadmap is like that, what the obstacles are. I had a quick question, and I don't know if it applies to this, I sense that it probably doesn't, but around capacity and a capacity plan, in the four years I've sat at this table, there's been numerous discussions about other outsiders kind of tapping into our plan. And I'm just wondering, would that impact the rate study? Obviously, there's a cost, and I'm assuming the cost would be given to the person that's trying, or, sorry, the organization trying to tap on, whether it's another municipality or another government organization. But I'm just wondering if we get, in, in simple terms, if we get more users on the system, does it change this rate study at all, or would it pretty much just stay the same because the cost of delivery is around the same?
Good question. The, we've accounted for some new users being added to the system, but more so in terms of the revenues that would be generated.
Okay.
The cost to actually access the capacity would typically be covered either through, you know, development charges or maybe a connection fee to either the water, the wastewater system. And those fees are, if it's a connection fee, they, they can be based on the available capacity at each of the plants and what's currently being utilized by the existing customers. And there's, you know, you can calculate what that cost might be based on capacity. In terms of development charges, those would be from major new subdivisions that require the addition of assets to your current system. So it's, the connection fees is, you know, you have your system, your pipe, your plant, someone wants to connect, there's the connection fee to access the existing capacity. And for development charges, when you begin to add new assets, a new pipe, a new pump, maybe expand the plant capacity, that's where development charges would come in. And those would fund, you know, the connection fees would be revenues to offset the rates, the rate revenues, if those go, go up. The development charges would offset the capital cost of an item. So if it's a pipe for a million dollars and half of, you know, half of that cost would benefit existing customers, then $500,000, the cost to the rate payers would be $500,000, and that's what you get rolled into the rates.
Yeah, I, I understand that. I mean, I'm just thinking, when we talk about economic development and that type of thing, when we're having this conversation around the wastewater and water facilities and having to pay for them in the end, I'm just, just in a simple, because I, I understand, we've, we've already gone through the process of, of doing charge, connect charges and paying for pumping stations and all that fun stuff. But I'm just wondering, just in a general thing, say, everything, everyone's hooked up, so we've already taken care of that. If we push for more users on the system long-term, does that help our cause or hurt our cause?
It, it would all depend on where you are with capacity. If you're on the threshold of, you know, sort of hitting your plant capacity or maybe a pipe capacity, then it would be costly because you'd then be looking at adding capacity to the current system. If you have the available capacity, then you're, you know, you're just utilizing what's already there in the bank, so to speak.
Perfect. Thank you.
Council Lewis?
A lot of information to filter, Derek, but you do bring up some good points. I don't really know if I would agree with the 4% increase every year. It's nice to have money in the bank, but to me, if we did a 4% increase every year in the water and sewer, we'd be just nickel and dime the taxpayers. Would it work if, say you did a 4% in 2023 and then didn't do another increase for a couple of years? It just seems like whenever you say at the end of 40 years, there's $21 million in the bank account and reserves, that seems like a lot of money.
That's for both systems.
In both systems.
That's for four of both systems.
Yeah. I just, I don't know, I don't know if I'd want to go with the 4% increase every year.
Any comments, Derek?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we haven't, we haven't modeled, you know, just a one-time 4% in 2023 and sort of hold it steady after that. But looking, if you look at slide 22, you would see where your combined reserve balances are around, that would be somewhere around, I would say, maybe a million dollars or so or less during that, you know, the next five to six years, and then it begins to climb up of that. So if, and that's with the 4% increase. So if, if we didn't do the 4%, then you would be short over the next, I would say, five to seven years or so, just, you know, off the top of my head, without doing a number crunch check, you would probably be short on dollars available to you for capital works over the next several years without a 4% increase. It's, it's when you get later on that the reserve balances begin to accumulate, let's say.
Okay. Yep.
Thank you.
Council Mellon? Well, yeah, there were some, some hard decisions going to have to be made in the, in the near future here. I guess one thing that sort of jumps out at me on page, I guess, 22, the water and wastewater reserve balances. I don't like to see those numbers below zero. They're, excuse the phrase, shit happens. And if it does, we don't have that reserve balance. So, and, you know, Council Lewis has a good point, but, you know, the 4% is a lot, but we're ticking along here pretty good. And the water is falling under zero in the reserve balance for a couple of years, 2024 and 20, 2024 and 2025. And then, you know, we start bringing it back up. I know in your major main report, you know, it's a, illustrated, you know, the, some of the costs that'll be, that'll take up those reserve balances, but I think, I would feel, I'm just going to make the comment, I would feel a lot more comfortable going forward, and I think the water and wastewater users should feel a lot more comfortable if you have plus balances in those reserves when you get to those low points. So what I'm saying is, I don't think there's enough of an increase to cover that cushion.
Yes.
Yes, Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Further to what Mr., what Council Mellon is saying, when, when Derek and John had first presented the rates to us, they were front-end loaded with a 9% increase for the first one, two, three, four, five, five years, and then would drop to a 2% increase. So that's, that's leading to where you're, where you're going, RT, that the water rate is showing negative, which would have to be, if we did any of these replacements, would have to be borrowed, if you will, from the wastewater, from the wastewater reserve. But in order, in order to make the, to make the increase more palatable and more consistent, I had them rejig it from 9% in the first five years to 4% over the term. So basically, we'd be borrowing, the water system, if we had to do these replacements, would be borrowing from the wastewater system and then being repaid in the, in the out years.
Okay.
Well, it's not really robbing Peter to pay Paul, but it's, yeah.
Borrowing on my friend. Just, if you're my friend, I need to borrow some money, just so you know. Go ahead, Council Mellon.
Yeah, I, I, I can, I don't know if that's such, you know, I can see what you're doing and why, I guess why. It's just that, when I see those numbers down at the zero or in a negative, it, it, I think it should send a red flag up to me, you know. I'm just making that comment because, guess what, I'm not going to be here to make that decision.
See y'all.
The other thing I will illustrate as well, too, is when we looked at the rate study, it's conservative on development. So if we get more development than what we anticipate, then of course, more revenue will go in, which means our reserves will increase. Also, as Derek alluded to, is grants or any funding is not incorporated in this. So our plan is still to be aggressive when it goes to provincial and federal funding. So if we get that funding, then we're not tapping into our reserves. So this is a snapshot today, but it can change hopefully for the better in the next 10 years.
And I realize it's a very fluid thing. I just don't think, I think we've got to hope for the best, but I think we've got to plan for the worst. I would, I, in my opinion, we should go out there and look at this if there is no funding Realistically, we can't, the government isn't committing to anything, you know, what their asset management requirements will be and how much we got to, I think realistically, our water and wastewater balances and reserves have to be done on no grant money at all.
They're basically...
And, and if, if it is, it's gravy. And then, you know, it can be, you know, and then like Council Lewis, like with the 4%, then, you know, we, the council of the day can adjust at that point. We get a million-dollar grant for something, you know, that was, you know, sort of factored into this, the whole equation, and then you can say, okay, well, we can drop from four to two or whatever. But to me, to be realistic, I don't, you know, that's, you know, that's like me going out to buy a new tractor, thinking I'm going to get $500 a ton corn.
It's close. It's good.
That's all of Mayor Bivels for me. I'm just making those comments.
And Derek, I understand where, where Council Mellon and the rest are coming from. We, we, we have looked at our asset management plan, not so much, well, you know, water and wastewater are incorporated in it, but we also have the, the road and building side of it. We actually don't even have the building side of it, which could probably scare even the rest of us here, on what kind of funding we need to do going forward. We were considering doing an infrastructure levy this past spring, but as much as there was a slim majority of council that could have pushed it through, we also knew that inflation where it is was, it wasn't the right year to enact it. But going forward, whoever's sitting at this table will have to seriously look at how they're going to fund not only water, wastewater, but also the, the road and building infrastructure we have within South Dundas. I understand that, and they will have to understand that water, wastewater is a standalone rating and revenue side of it. So we'll see where that all goes. Just a comment, Deputy Mayor brought up the possibility of, of other users, and the other users would be, there is a municipality actually looking for water north of us that can tap into the excess capacity. We do have at our water plant, so that may rejig the numbers, but we probably land up at that time being fair to them that it's not, I wouldn't say it's going to be revenue neutral, it has to have some benefit to South Dundas, no doubt about it, but that's going to take a, a major player from the federal and provincial side for that to happen. So, but hopefully, if it does, it'll work out for, for both that municipality and ourselves. I do thank you for your presentation. It's, I'm thanking staff for working with you on these numbers. I know 4% seems like a lot, but inflation at 7% right now, 4% is, is probably a low number to go forward, and maybe, maybe the next council needs to look at five, just to make sure we have what Council Mellon has alluded to. We don't land, having happened that, that deficit coming forward. And to those who are running for election this year, if you need some nighttime reading, I suggest that you do go through Derek's full study along with his slide deck and really educate yourself on, on what you may be facing if you end up being successful with your election going forward. So I know it's not done yet, but they, you know, they can go and see this committee of the whole agenda, and it's all there. So at least they'll have a, a good base on where they need to go and, and what they really, really need to think about going forward. Because anybody who goes up there on next Thursday night in Matilda and says that we can do zero for the next four is, has not been educated on what the last four meant to South Dundas and how we can go forward. So, so with that, thank you, Derek, if there's nothing else.
My pleasure, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for having me.
Okay. And with that, we will have a 10-minute break, please. And with that, we will have a 10-minute break, please.
Okay, we're back. Thank you very much. So, we're going to go on to Recreation Master Plan Final Report from Montez Brown Planning Consultants and Tucker Reed Associates. So, once again, we welcome Todd and Dennis to South Dundas Council. The floor is yours.
Great. Good morning, Dan. Go ahead, Todd.
Thank you for having us today. And Dennis is going to run us through a fairly short PowerPoint presentation. But what we wanted to just highlight to you at the beginning was that when the draft master plan was prepared, we tested that with the community, with stakeholders and with yourselves, and we heard excellent feedback, which we hope that you will see in the revised document, that we've taken that into account. And we recognize that, you know, the importance that council has placed on looking aspirationally into the future in terms of attracting families, businesses, professionals, and tourists to the community, and the important role that recreation plays. So Dennis is going to run us through that, and we'll be happy to answer any questions. Dennis?
Thank you, Todd. Good morning, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council, staff, and members of the public. As a reminder, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, it's a high-level document that provides staff and council with a guide to meet community needs over a 10-year period. The draft master plan, or the master plan looks at a number of areas, including indoor and outdoor recreation facilities, parks, trails, waterfront programs, activities, and service delivery. The master plan demonstrates the municipality's commitment to investing in parks and recreation. It positions South Dundas to address key strategic priorities, including strategic asset management, maintaining and enhancing and strengthening community assets, retaining and attracting residents and professionals, as well as tourists, and supporting economic growth. We also, in terms of the benefits of parks and recreation, they enhance social, mental, and physical well-being. They encourage community engagement and inclusion. It helps build strong families and communities, connects people with nature, supports creativity, and again, provides economic development benefits. So there's clearly certainly a value in investing in parks and recreation. And this master plan certainly helps staff and council direct where investment is needed most. And additionally, the master plan will also help the municipality apply for grant funding, as you can demonstrate that capital project requests have been rationalized and that you have identified them as a priority for the community. In terms of the master plan inputs, we reviewed key background documents, such as your strategic plan. We reviewed your community profile and parks and recreation trends in the sector. And we also undertook community consultation and as well site visits to see your parks and facilities, as well as reviewed facility usage data. And all these inputs fed into the master plan that informed the 95 recommendations. As you may recall, a number of consultation activities were undertaken, and we worked with staff to raise awareness and collect input to inform the master plan process. In total, there were nearly 650 households were engaged, representing over 1,600 people of all ages, and less than 2% of this amount were also non-residents. And our experience, that level of input from non-residents does not typically tip the scale one way or another in terms of the input that we received. And as Todd mentioned, once we had the draft master plan completed, we tested it with the public. So we held a public open house at the Morseburg Arena. And following that public open house, the public was able to review the document online and provide their feedback through public survey. We also received additional, we also received feedback from the committee of council, as well as additional feedback from the project team, as well as we receive feedback from the Economic Development Officer to ensure that the master plan captures the role that parks and recreation plays in terms of economic development and tourism. So in terms of some of the examples of feedback that we heard through the feedback process, there was support for updating the waterfront master plans, as well as suggestions to consider alternative locations for the splash pad playground and off-leash dog park in Iroquois, looking outside and beyond the waterfront. And it was also mentioned that these projects should be community-driven projects. There were also requests to investigate the potential for an indoor sports facility and pool, as well as long-term replacement for the Morseburg Arena. Undertaking investments to J.C. Whittaker Park was suggested, and there was also public support for enhancing recreation programs to better use indoor facility space. So the feedback that we received from the public and council were reviewed, and the revisions were undertaken to the draft master plan to reflect what we've heard. I'll take a pause there before we go any further, and we're more than happy to take any questions if there are any.
Okay. Director, you have any comments now, or you just want to go to council? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
I don't have any comments at this time.
Counsel Lewis?
Nothing.
Okay, we'll go on then, Dennis, please.
Great. Thank you. So in terms of the recommendations, we've identified three key themes in the master plan that aligns with the municipality's strategic priorities. And on the following slides, we've highlighted key recommendations in the master plan that addresses these strategic priorities over the next 10 years. So the first theme that we've identified is growing South Dundas. We recognize that the municipality is focused on keeping residents in the community, attracting new residents, as well as working professionals and economic development. And from parks and recreation perspective, investing in parks and recreation infrastructure is certainly one strategy to achieve these objectives. So key recommendations under this theme include creating an active transportation strategy for walking, cycling, and other non-motorized forms of travel in South Dundas, updating the Morseburg waterfront plan and Iroquois Commons waterfront plan in coordination with the waterfront committees and the public to establish renewed vision for the waterfront, evaluating the feasibility and public support for a natural and adventure playground, a splash pad, and an off-leash dog park, either along the Iroquois waterfront or alternative locations in Iroquois should also be considered. And these should be community-driven projects similar to what was undertaken in Morseburg, and study the feasibility of modernizing the Iroquois Civic Center to enhance the use of the facility and respond to the community desire for recreation programming with consideration given to a gymnasium-type space, a program space, a library, a fire hall, a community kitchen, and other amenities. Undertake enhancements to Matilda Memorial Park, including a spray feature, small-scale skateboard zone, outdoor fitness equipment, as well as monitoring the demand for a second volleyball court. Undertaking enhancements to J.C. Whittaker Park, including resurfacing the multi-use court and replacing the basketball hoops, and relocating and updating the playgrounds, as well as make the recreation coordinator a full-time position to respond to community demand for more recreation programming, regularly engaging community groups, and assisting with volunteerism and other responsibilities to less strength and service delivery. The next theme that we have identified is keeping the 55-plus population active, engaged, and connected. And this theme recognizes the municipality's large older adult and senior population, and the need to ensure that parks and recreation opportunities are available to support this population group and allow them to age in place in the municipality. So key recommendations that we've identified include establishing pedestrian and circulation areas within parks to provide a firm and stable walking surface, as well as incorporating comfort features within the parks' trail system, such as seating, lighting, pathways, and other amenities to encourage park use, establishing casual drop-in times for older adults and seniors within existing spaces, constructing a multi-use sports pad in Earl Baker Park for tennis and pickleball, continuing to work with organizations that serve the 55-plus community to promote activities and ensure long-term success of those organizations, as well as expanding arts and cultural activities, including the waterfront and promoting community service providers. The last theme that we've identified is a responsible approach with aspirations of the future. So we spoke about the municipality's goals, strategic goals of managing your assets, as well as attracting new residents, retaining residents, and pursuing economic development. And pursuing new recreation facility development can certainly support this goal. So with that in mind, recommendations that we've identified is during the five-year update of the master plan, the municipalities should revisit the need for an indoor multi-use sports facility that may include an artificial turf field, walking track, and other spaces. And in the short term, revise the business plan for the indoor sports facility to update capital and operating budgets, re-engage the community to confirm their support for the facility from a usage perspective, particularly with respect to program opportunities that they may provide, as well as explore partnerships and other space needs. Undertaking long-term planning for the replacement of the Morseburg Arena beyond a 10-year timeframe of the master plan is also recommended, as well as evaluating the feasibility of a basic outdoor pool that we've identified, that is something that the municipality should explore during that five-year update process. But these two facilities could potentially be located at the same site as the future indoor sports facility to create a community hub. And the outdoor pool can also be designed to be enclosed through a future phase, recognizing that there are higher operating costs associated to maintain an indoor pool compared to an outdoor pool. And the municipality should evaluate potential site opportunities for a future indoor sports facility that is large enough to accommodate an indoor field, walking track, arena, outdoor pool, and other indoor and outdoor recreation facility and needs, as well as parking requirements and other supporting infrastructure. Establishing a capital reserve to improve existing or construct new indoor recreation facilities is also recommended. So in terms of the implementation of the master plan, approximately $4.4 million in capital recommendations over the next 10 years have been identified, and these are Class D estimates. And in addition, there are additional capital costs for an indoor sports facility of about $4.3 million, which is what was identified through the municipality's current business plan for the sports facility, but it's recommended that municipality revisit the need, revisit capital costs for that facility, as well as, in addition, we've identified a potential capital cost for an outdoor pool of about $4.5 to $6 million, and these costs would be subject to design specification and amenities. So funding opportunities include taxation, parkland, cashinloo, surcharges, establishing a capital reserve, as well as donations, sponsorships, advertising, external grants, community partnerships, and third-party operators. Recommendations that we've identified are based on short, medium, and long-term priorities. So while the master plan identifies 95 recommendations, staff will bring individual recommendations forward through annual work plans to be considered and integrated into capital and operating budgets, and to provide council with additional information as necessary. And as the master plan is implemented, the municipality should monitor your population growth, usage, and participation data, and to inform that five-year update or to adjust the recommendations and implementation as necessary. And we've also recommended establishing a Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee to assist the municipality and the community with implementing the master plan. So with that, I'd like to turn it back over to council, and we're happy to take any questions that you may have.
Any comments this time? Sure. Go ahead. You've renewed it from a staff point of view.
No, I'd like to thank Dennis for all of his work. I know that he took all the comments that he received from council on August 10th. Shannon and I met with them. I know we had Dennis prepare based off your guys' comments, then a draft report came back to us. Shannon and I reviewed it. We had our Economic Development Officer review it. I had the rec coordinator review it again, now that she's got her feet a little bit wetter and wasn't as, and so we all reviewed it. We've gotten more comments in. It is an in-depth report. I feel like I've read it more than anybody here, except for maybe Dennis, who's maybe read it a few more times than me. I do feel that it's a report that's, its goal is modernizing parks, rec, and facilities, and it is the guiding document to modernizing these things. It's going to be a powerful tool for the next 10 years for this department. I do think it's still missing, and I know council just had a report, it's missing the asset management side, which I will say, you know, provincially, I have to have that done by 2024. I know I'm already working with the asset coordinator. We're starting, I've done some training on what he's already done, and we're starting to have monthly meetings getting ready for that. And I think those two tools together are going to be sort of the building blocks for parks and rec for the next 10 years. Other than that, there's 95 recommendations in there. I've spoken to lots of people. You're not going to get every single person agreeing with all 95 of them. I personally don't agree with all 95 of them, but that's not the goal. There's recommendations in there that just aren't for me, but they are for other residents in South Dundas. And that's sort of what you're trying to encompass. If you get most people happy with, you know, their portion of it, and another person happy with their portion of it, then there's areas in there that are working to serve all of South Dundas. So that's what I like in the report is, yes, I know that there's been lots of critical feedback. I'll admit the feedback I've gotten is sometimes varying from person to person, which I almost see as a good thing, that we're encompassing a lot of South Dundas in the report. Some of the recommendations are common sense, which I'm kind of excited for as somebody who's just stepped into this position. It almost saves staff going to, if I wasn't here and having just taken a bunch of information, it's nice to have that common sense stuff written down in a report that you're not trying to reinvent the wheel, you're not trying to take in the information all over again. And that's sort of been what I've been struggling with the last couple of weeks, and I think this master plan will help a little bit with that. Other than that, it's, I think it's still a live document, and, you know, the stakeholders are going to change, volunteers are going to change. So staff just have to make sure that it stays a live document, and I think things like the rec committee, and there's some recommendations in there to help it stay a live document, and to keep staff honest on keeping it a live document, which is an important part of the process. So I'll leave that as the end of my comments for now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Where to begin? Okay, well, I mean, back up the truck a little bit. I, you know, sitting at this table, you know, when staff first came to us with the idea of using some of the modernization funding to have this recreation plan developed, I was super excited, because I know, I've heard from you guys sitting at this table that it's nice to have a plan and have something that you can work towards that's kind of, you know, agreed to, and we move forward that way, right? We don't move forward well if it's confusing, or lots of gray areas, or whatever the case may be. So that was my intent with being excited about the rec plan. Hearing what David's saying, and I do hear what you're saying, I just, my concerns are it's not crisp enough. When I looked at the plan, there's a lot of repetition on work that's A) already been done, or I still maintain the fact that it's built around folks that are present now in some of the committees that have had a huge influence. And as we all know, the committee should change, right? Different personalities, different ideas. And I worry that it will not be crisp enough to get us where we need to go. And that is a main concern with this. You know, if David is saying that he can pull out some ideas, depending on where I'm sitting, my push is going to be, I'm going to want to see some of those ideas move forward. And, you know, recently, I got my own personal copy of the Morseburg waterfront plan from a decade ago, and there's still relevant ideas in there. I mean, in a lot of cases, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. And I feel like some of this is, we haven't captured the points that we've already done the work on versus the points where we are missing things to be able to do the work. And that's kind of my worry about this. So I'll give you an example, the recommendation for a dog park in Iroquois. But then we have contradictory language around community hubs. So on social media right now, there's a "Meet Me at the Dog Park" site, and there's Iroquois folks that will post, "Hey, going to the dog park? Who wants to meet with Fluffy and I and have some fun?" And it's, the dog park is becoming a community hub. So I'm not saying we don't need one in Iroquois, but I'm saying we haven't fully captured the way that we are using some of the spaces currently to kind of impact how we move forward, how our residents are using that facility, right? And I use the dog park because it's a perfect example, because it's very busy now. We've got people coming, I was told last week that there's actually a group that come from Van Cleek Hill once a week, and they come with their dogs, they think it's a premium dog park, they meet up, and the whatever. We haven't captured some of those trends and some of the use of our stuff fully. And, you know, I understand the definition of, you know, saying that this is, you know, a type of report where we're high-level, but as far as implementation, we've missed a lot of that. We've missed a lot of what's already going on. Now, I have dogs, but we don't go to the dog park. But as deputy mayor, I'm recognizing the fact when I drive by how busy it is, and watching on social media, and then finding out that that's what our residents are doing. That's my fundamental concern, is there's not enough of the residents in this report. There's a lot of consensus building with federal reports mixed in with some of the reports we've already done, some of our objectives that we've worked on. Well, in a couple of months, it's "we" is not going to exist, it's going to be another group of individuals. So it's not, it's not heavy enough in residential usage, and that's what I'm worried about. The residents have not been, in my mind, properly reflected in this report. And I know we can't force everyone, but it was my hope that we would have done a deep dive to see what the usage looks like for some of these things. And I have concerns. I don't want it to be on the shelf. And right now, I feel that there's a risk that some of it is going to be, especially when it gets out, that we're talking about $4.4 million in 10 years, right? People want this now. You know, that was some of the feedback that I received. The kids in the area have waited two years to do things, and essentially, we're telling them that, you know, some of this stuff might not happen now. And to your point, David, about asset management, we have a ton of asset management. There's a lot of conversation about play structures in here. I've already sat at this table where the staff have come forward and said it's end of life, we're replacing it, we have a plan. It's already being done, and it takes up a large portion. So that is my concern, that it's not a crisp, a crisp movable document that really gives us what we need. And I appreciate Dennis's time in this and putting the concerns in there, and hopefully I'm not coming across like I would never be satisfied, but my intention when raising my hand and agreeing to spend the money on this versus what we ended up, there's still a huge gully. And I am concerned about this, and I've managed stuff for years. I know how crisp a plan has to be for folks to be able to use it. And, you know, if I am elected, the rec committee is actually on a list. It's been on a list for a very long time with my experience in creating the Economic Development Committee and the Tourism Committee, and what could come, those are things we already did. I don't think $75,000 should really pay for the suggestion of a rec committee. So I'm still not, I'm still concerned that we did not get value for what we needed, and for me, it's not crisp enough. It's not. So those are my comments. No one needs to respond.
Okay. Counsel Lewis?
I echo some of what the deputy mayor's saying, because, you know, rec is, was my business for 29 years with the municipality. And nothing comes overnight. You know, it takes time. $4.4 million, sounds like a lot of money. I do believe our residents has to be patient, because we do have other priorities that have to be met. I know this report is better than the first time I read it, so I thank you for that. And if elected, I will still, like, recreation will still be on the top of my priority list, because that was the field that I was in. But I am willing to be patient, because I do think at the end of the day that it will work out. And that's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Mellon?
Oh, yeah, thank you, everybody else. This final draft, I guess, is a little better than the first draft. It sort of highlights some of the things that we can do, and some of the things has been already said, we've sort of worked at, or we already got done, or we've already thought about. And some of the things, the smaller, I guess if you will, smaller items can be worked on and, you know, incorporated into a budget, you know, going forward over the next, you know, four years, eight years, whatever. But the one thing that is, I guess, is a little bit frustrating, and, you know, and I've heard a little bit about it, that, you know, oh, you know, I think people will look at this and say, well, you know, this isn't what I want, this isn't, you know, and David alluded to that, you know, that doesn't, you know, that doesn't, I don't think we need that in there, or we need this, or we should have this. This was a plan that was sort of spearheaded and surveyed and got feedback from the public. And it's frustrating when we don't, I guess, get enough input from the general public in a wide enough geographical area to capture everybody's thoughts and what they would like. You know, and then they'll look at this and say, well, you know, they'll pick it apart. But, you know, it's, like Deputy Mayor Gardner alluded to, you know, you can't make people take the surveys and show, and get involved in this. It just gets frustrating when you get a negative feedback on the plan, because they're, you know, they've got stuff in there that shouldn't be there. At the end of the day, you know, there is some costing in there, which is something I've been pushing for, and I'll probably go out on a limb and say it's probably a Class F estimate on some of these costs, and, you know, for the large ticket items, the large ticket items, and let's face it, you go through there and what people want, you know, you know, an indoor recreational, multi-use recreational facility, indoor pool, you know, and we're looking at 10 to 15 years down the road. And let's not kid ourselves, we, council, future councils, can do whatever the people want, if the people will pay for it. And that's unfortunately, the bottom line. It's got to come from somewhere, it's got to be incorporated into the overall budget. We've got a bridge and culverts and roads and storm sewer, you know, we had that report come in that's scared everybody to death on, over the next 10 years. We have our landfill and the closure, possible closure of our Matilda landfill in a few years, and the increased cost associated with that. So this has all got to be incorporated into what South Dundas residents can afford. And I'm going to make the comment that, you know, in five years' time, or in eight years' time, and I think, you know, I think it should be probably four years' time, I think it'd be nice to have staff come up, and it might cost a little bit of money, but hard Class B estimates without spending an engineer's report, but what it would cost for a multi-use recreational facility, and I would go out so far as to say it should be on the, in four years' time, it should be on the ballot. Do you want to spend $20 million on a multi-use, and I'm just throwing $20 million out there, if you look at the Benson Center, it was around 20... if you look at the Benson Center, it was around 25 million, I don't think we need anything, but that's 10 years.
35.
35?
36, yes.
And they're having trouble servicing the debt load that they had to incur, because they got some grant money, they got a sponsorship, a large sponsorship for the building, but they're having issues with servicing what debt they had to take on to do that building, plus the maintenance and the upkeep. I was just scrolling through here when I read this, we're running a deficit on running our arena now. You imagine what it's going to cost us if we have a multi-use recreational facility with an indoor pool and maybe one or two ice surfaces, you know, a track, and whatever the people would want, you know? So that all has to be incorporated into this. So to me, this is something that I don't think five people at a council table in the future should say, yeah, that's what we're going to do, and it's, we're going to, you know, your tax increase is going to go up by 10%. I mean, as the mayor said earlier, there was a sort of a discussion at budget time for roads and bridges and culverts, and another levy or more in the tax increase to cover Something that's going to have to come down the road, and something with this, you know, recreational master plan, especially with the large ticket items, we got to figure out where that money's going to come from. And if the people want it, fine, if the people are willing to absorb an extra tax increase to pay for that, fine. Council can do whatever people want, but they have to realize there's going to be a cost incurred with that. And my only comment is, I already mentioned, Mayor, that this is something that maybe needs to be, when a big ticket item like that, because everybody has their wants and their needs, and I think that would fall under the want end of things, because we have our needs with our roads and bridges and culverts and our landfills, we can't get around them, they're needed, we have to do them. It's sort of the, the extra amenities that make a community better, that's going to cost us that much kind of money, that we have to have firm numbers, and I think we need, I would go so far as to put it on a referendum in four years' time in the election, if we had hard numbers. This is what it's going to cost you, and this is what it's going to be an increase. That's, you know, a lot of the other stuff, I think, it's a better report, there is some issues with it, you know, it's not exactly light reading, a lot of reading, and a lot of stuff to absorb, and I think the next term of council in another month, month and a half, will have a lot of nights of reading to get through our water and wastewater that we just went through in this here master plan, to decide how they want to move forward, you know, over the next four years and plus.
Well, first of all, Dennis and Todd, like, thank you for all your work, like, thank David for, and the rest of the staff for their work, too. It's a big thing, we haven't had a look at or refresh of recreation in South Dundas for over 10 years, which makes doing something like this challenging. I guess my greatest disappointment is that here it is September 21st, and it still says draft on it. It lands up being, becoming an election issue, which is not fair to those who are running, those who are here, or myself, because, and I'm not saying that's anybody's fault, I think we should have done this last year and dealt with it, and we didn't. So I, speaking to the timing, speaking to the body of what's in the plan, I, you know, I understand that this is a plan by those who contributed, whether it's residents, recreation, staff, or us as council. I still feel we're probably a little thin on public input, not saying you didn't try hard, it's just, we have a apathetic public at times, and they all of a sudden wake up and, when it comes to the election itself, and now we have everybody saying this, that, and everything else, and I find that unfortunate, and I know this council's worked hard for the last four years, along with staff, and trying to get to where we are today without the plan. However, I think there's enough basis in here to go forward, I think, you know, there are some concerns that the mayor has brought up, and I'm not certainly making light of them, I think they're valid concerns. However, we got to get, we got to put something on the shelf for the next council that they can have something to work with. I think there's, you know, as I said, it's not perfect, and I actually echo what Counselor Mellon has alluded to when it comes to funding. It's a significant challenge for all the asks that are there, not saying any of the asks are good, or bad, I should say, you know, we keep spending money on the arena, and fair enough, we need to spend significant dollars to get in and out of it now, which doesn't really enhance recreation, it just makes that facility more accessible. Drove by Prescott's new arena yesterday, because I was there, and that's close to $20 million, and it's just, it's a pretty small structure, it's high, but it's nothing, the footprint is not large. So if you want more in South Dundas, the people want more in South Dundas, you know, it's going to take some serious dollars. Without any federal or provincial partnerships, you know, I did some real quick math, and, you know, I came up to almost $15 million over the next 10 years if we want to do all those nice asks. Extrapolating that over $75,000 for 1%, and that's really ballparking a lot of things, you know, that's a 20% increase every year. Now, it's not 20% increase and then live with it, no, 20% every year to gain up. You put it up 20%, at least you got it, and then you make sure you put it aside. Big challenge in making sure councils put things aside when they need money for roads, bridges, culverts, buildings, because we haven't done that yet, and I, perhaps, speaking of buildings, you might have to get out the old, old, old study that was done in '98, I believe, on how many buildings the South Dundas really need by a committee? You can go dig it out, it's interesting. And the trouble is nothing will happen then, it's real hard to challenge that one. Do we have too many buildings? I don't know, but that's another debate. One of our challenges in South Dundas is that we've got, we're centered to the south, we got Morseburg and Iroquois as our main villages, we have Princeton and Williamsburg in the north. We forget about, no, Dunbar, yeah, Dunbar, who is, you know, in that southeast quadrant, which is in South Dundas, they look north, and I hear some challenges going on there if they want to use their facilities, but you can't really put something like a multi-use facility in the middle of South Dundas, we don't have the infrastructure to service it, and that's, get water there ain't easy enough, it's the sewer issue, and then everybody's going to say, well, I got to drive a million miles, well, if you want to do anything, you got to drive, you drive to Cornwall, you drive to Rockville, you drive to Ottawa. Not sure we can do that in the future, but we can't have everything centered down in the south, because you're basically, you're restricted both how things go. I'll leave that to the next council to figure out where they're going to go, I do believe we have to start looking at some new facilities, and that's, as I always say, you got to dream big, but you got to dream aspirationally, and make sure you can do it. No different than any business that you can be in, you'd like to have, expand your business or do something. Doing nothing is not an answer, so I think we have to continue looking at that. But coming back to this document, I think, you know, you've done your best, and what was here, I'm going to say that, you know, as we go through the next month or so, and things kind of sort out, and what people want to do from a, because now they're listening point of view, maybe we'll pick up a few more points, and whoever comes on council can maybe add a few points, subtract a few points, and go on. The referendum idea is nice, but sometimes you can't do that, because you got to be the leader and say, we need to do this, and, because you put, we're never going to do anything. There's just too many people who say, well, I don't use the arena, what do we need arena for? Well, if you don't have arena in your facility, in your municipality, you're lacking something. We don't need two or three or four, but, you know, a good quality recreation facility, once we feel that the arena is either done or has another use, is not a bad way of looking forward, and it's long-term, it's 10, whatever. But in the end, as Counselor Mellon alluded to, it, the Class D is great, but you can never get to an A, because you'll, once you see the A, so, okay, I can't do it at all, but at least have something that you can base a grant application on, right now, we have nothing. So we have an aging population, as you alluded to, in the 55-plus, we're there, three of us are there, that our recreation needs are somewhat different, but we have to attract families with youth. If you look at the numbers, we're declining, and I'm not sure, I guess, in 2026, I guess, be the next census, it'd be an interesting C, how, if, if the five-year shift and what it looks like, if we don't gain on the bottom, there's going to be some serious issues 10, 15, 20 years down the road on what we need to do here, so. As I said, you know, it's a good draft, it's something to work with, I'm not going to say it's, you close the book and this is it, but, because of its timing, but I think there's enough meat there that whoever's sitting here could, can make it work. It's not perfect. Would have been nice another, a year ahead of time, but I think we are where we are, and I'm willing to at least put a small stamp of approval on it and see where it goes from here. Dennis?
Maybe I could speak.
Todd?
So really, this, like your master report, this master plan is really a roadmap moving forward. We recognize that there are limitations in terms of getting the public to participate. Certainly, we worked with your staff to get as many people involved as possible, to get the awareness out there. The document is laid out in a manner that, although long, I recognize what the counselor mentioned in terms of length, it really does lay it out in terms of demographics, trends, community consultation, and then looking at each facility type, park type, trail type, service delivery and programming. So it's a clear plan with recommendations. Certainly, it is a document that will help your staff be able to go forward to council for requests, and as more information becomes available, it will inform those recommendations even further, especially as you get into the later timeframes of the master plan itself. We've also been very cautious in terms of our recommendations associated with major capital expenditures. So we have been concerned that, is there sufficient population to justify or to support an indoor artificial turf facility or an outdoor pool? So really, just a cautionary note to the public, stakeholders and council, that it may be something that you want to aspire to, but really be sure of the costs, and make sure that you can afford to not only build it, but that you can maintain it in the years to come. So that, that's an important message that the plan does contain in it. I think there is a lot of key recommendations for all different interests, abilities, age groups, and so forth within your community, and certainly, we've recognized that there is a need to have things for young children and teens and families, at the same time as the mayor had just alluded to, the population is aging, and so that it is important that there are opportunities for that 55-plus age group, and we think we have embedded that in that. Dennis' presentation referred to the draft plan in terms of, you know, I guess the document we provided to you at the last meeting, that we revisited, based on the input that we've received, we have provided you with a final document, which does incorporate all of the comments and so forth. We recognize, though, that any plan will evolve over time, and as David had indicated, it allows staff to keep it alive and to bring recommendations forward to council when those recommendations are appropriate, and to provide you with more detail at that time. And certainly, costing would be updated to make sure that it's current to the day that is being recommended to council, whether it's tomorrow or five or 10 years from now. So I guess I'll close with that, and, you know, if there's any specific questions, I'm more than happy to answer them, but, you know, we do think it's a good roadmap to move you forward and allow staff and council to work together with the community to make sure that the needs and priorities are met.
Okay. Any further comments, Seth, Mayor?
No.
Anything from you? Staff?
So, Mr. Mayor, I think, as the CAO and I had discussed, we're going to look to bring the report back in October, if that's what council's looking for, for adoption.
Okay. Well, we're at a point that, you know, this council can basically do that, the next council is going to determine what they're going to do with it. I think it'll be up to you as staff, that if you feel strongly that there's points in there that have to be moved along, then that'll be part and parcel of your work, and in the end, you got to respect whoever's here and how it all works out. If there's no further comments, I'd like to thank again Todd and Dennis for their work. I know it was a lot, probably a little bit more than you anticipated for a small municipality, but we do feel that, you know, we spent a significant amount of dollars for a small municipality to get to where we are, so we thank you for your work at this time.
Thank you, it was a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you.
With that, we have come to the end of our meeting. If there's nothing else, I'd like to, first of all, thank council for their work today, like, thank all staff for their background work and presentations today, and like, thank the audience for participating. Adam Clerk?
Moved by Counselor Lewis, seconded by Counselor Mellon, that council now adjourn at 11:30 to meet again at the call of the chair.
All in motion, those in favor, those of any, motion carries. Thank you very much.